We're going to call, uh, to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners Work Session. It is May 1st. Um, I love for the record, all three commissioners are here and present in the natuh room. And we will begin with Parks. Ms. Whitmer, morning. Have to jump over the computer. Anyway, uh, thank you for letting us come here today. We're going to give you an update on the Karst Athletic Complex project, but it was very fortunate that we are here because we have actually three change orders that are critical for us to keep moving so we don't have to pull construction crews off on Monday since it might be a nice week next week. And any week without rain for us is a great week. Um, I, I believe Mr. Cockrell talked to you about the three change orders. Do you want me to read them?
I think you need to go through them and explain what they are for the public and everything.
Okay, yeah. The public will want to know. Excellent. And my, come up and give details. Come on up. This is Andy Knutts from Bloodsill, Riggar, Cooper, James. He's the project engineer and the project manager. And he can go over each change order. And if you have questions, just, just have him stop. Here's the summary. I have these if you need.
Great.
Um, I'm going to say that we do, we do not have copies of the change orders. So we would need that. Thank you. You had Angie. Thank you.
It's, um, each one of the change orders.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I can, should I share my screen here? I can pull them up on the screen. Would that be helpful? Um. And I have permission to share my screen. All right. I've only got one screen at the moment. Okay.
That's so cool. That's awesome.
Okay.
That's so cool, the way they do that. So I'll swap with you. A line. Why, 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 why? I don't know. Is to learn, but I probably would forget it pretty quickly.
Well, while we're working on that, I'll just, uh, I'll just use words. And, uh, so Karst Farm Park, as you're all familiar, it's, you know, over near the airport on the southwest side of town. And we've been working on a project to install three synthetic turf soccer fields, full-size fields, uh, fields nine, 11, and 12, which are on the west side of the park, uh, between the pond and the dog park. There's actually four fields there. Fields nine, 10, 11, and 12 are all in a group there. Um, the synthetic turf is going to go on fields nine, 11, and 12. And, uh, we have Reed and Sons Construction is, has been onsite working for a couple of months now, and they've been moving a lot of dirt. They've been installing utilities, uh, storm drainage, electrical, water utilities, getting everything ready for this really exciting new, uh, athletic complex. And, uh, we've had a little struggle with the weather. Um, you know, there's earlier in April last month, there was, uh, pretty historic flooding, and that slowed things down a little bit. Just having so much water to deal with when we're doing a lot of earthwork is, is a challenge. And so it slowed things down a little bit. And, uh, it's one of the change orders here today that we're looking at is, well, there's two related things. One is for some additional drainage infrastructure to manage some drainage from, you know, that's actually coming through a culvert underneath the railroad tracks and impacting the immediate area of the, of the soccer field improvements. And that, um, was kind of an unanticipated thing that was, you know, became apparent to us as we were in construction.
Kurt said rejoin the meeting.
Okay.
They kicked you off. Rejoin.
All right, please promote Mr. Knutts to presenter, please. For whatever reason. There we go.
Karst Farm Park?
Not yet.
Yeah, it's actually online. Even if you can't see it, it's online.
Um, okay. Well, I trust that you're seeing Karst Farm Park now. Okay, so we're talking about, uh, fields nine, 11, and 12 are getting the synthetic turf treatment. There's, uh, some water coming, uh, it's a 24-inch culvert pipe coming under the railroad tracks right over here and hitting the north side of the dog park. And I, you know, we had figured that that water was coming down the, the west side of the dog park and through a storm pipe in this direction, but it's actually coming down here between the dog park and field 11 and 12. So we have some, you know, some upgrades to the storm drainage system, system to deal with that additional drainage. And, uh, so that's the subject of contract number one, change order three here. Uh, so that's a total of, uh, $114,723, which would actually be added to the contract amount. Um, Kelly?
Which will be paid by the park board. They've already approved it.
Yeah. Park Board has already committed the funds to pay for that change order. So, uh, while commissioners manage that contract, Parks Board is contributing money to, you know, pay for the additional change here on the storm drain improvements. Um, then on contract number one, change order four is, is for some, to address some unforeseen conditions with the, the earthwork out there. Um, on fields nine, 11, and 12, uh, we had assumed a certain amount of, you know, topsoil removal to get to good subgrade conditions on which to put the, the synthetic turf. And it turned out that there was actually a lot more topsoil on those fields than we expected. And it's, it turns out to be not a totally bad thing. Um, it's just that this topsoil isn't really good to, to, you know, compact it, make it a firm surface for, you know, the synthetic turf to be built upon. So they had to remove a lot more soil material than expected. And that's, they've been stockpiling it over here in this part of the park. But it turns out that that topsoil is actually going to be really good for us in the next phase of the project when we're putting grass. We're going to strip field six and seven, put new drainage and irrigation on field six and seven, and we'll need a lot of, you know, good topsoil to put there. So, so we're just stockpiling it for now and putting it over here on field six and seven. And we can use some money we had set aside in the contract to pay for, you know, we thought we were going to need to import a lot of, of good topsoil from offsite to go on field six and seven. Turns out, we don't need that. We have that material onsite. We can use that allowance instead to pay for, for some good firm clay that will be imported from offsite and placed on fields nine, 11, and 12 to create that firm, stable surface that we need for the synthetic turf. So, so it's really just, uh, reassigning, uh, an allowance that we have in the contract using dollars that are already in the contract to pay for, uh, for the clay. So that's, so that's what contract one, change order four is about. And as it says here, there's no increase in the contract amount associated with that. And then the third change order contract is actually on contract two. If you recall, we have two separate contracts for this project. The second contract is for fields 10 and 12. And we have a change order specific to that second contract, um, related to some rock removal that occurred, uh, during construction. And again, we had an allowance already in the contract for rock removal. And while they were excavating across this part of the park, uh, to put in the drain lines, they encountered rock, and we just documented that, and we're paying for it out of the rock removal allowance. And, uh, the other thing in that was, oh, for some electrical, some additional electrical wiring is the second part of, of the contract to change order three. And again, that can be paid for with contingency funds that we have already in the contract. So there's no, there's no change to the total dollar amount in contract two.
Um, colleagues have questions?
Questions?
Any questions?
At least it doesn't involve a lot of money.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm pleased with how this is working out. And we're, you know, with the additional funds allocated from Parks Board, like, we're, we're keeping the cost pretty well controlled here. And I think that, um, that we, we're on track to complete all the improvements this fall. And I, we'll see if, if all the synthetic turf can be ready for fall soccer season. But at this point, it's, it's looking iffy.
Thank you.
So.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, the Karst Athletic Contract, uh, number one, change order number four, the Karst Athletic Contract, Complex Contract Change Number Two, Change Order Number Three. And that was easy. Um, I know, I made it look easy. Um, and I'd like to also move, um, to approve the Karst Athletic Complex Contract Number One, Change Order Number Three. And this has, um, a cost of $114,723.47, and that will come from, uh, Fund, um, 1000, County General Parks, and Parks Non-Reverting, 1178, 1179. Um, that's my motion.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Uh, did we miss anything, Ms. Whitmer? Anything? No, we're good? Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Oh, uh, at this stage, our substantial completion date is October 1st.
Oh.
So at that point, we expect synthetic turf to be completed and, and the new sod will be on field six and seven, although it really won't be ready for public use until the following spring after that sod has a chance to, you know, get rooted in and, and get established. And, and when the irrigation comes on in the spring and, and Parks, Parks Maintenance Crews can check that it all is looking good. And, yeah. Oh, yeah. And Kelly mentioned the light poles. Like, we have, uh, you may have noticed that there's new light poles up on fields nine, 11, and 12 right now. And so those are, you know, Cassidy Electric is out there getting the, the conduits and the wiring in the ground to, to turn those lights on as soon as we get some synthetic turf. And there will be new lights also on field six, seven, and eight, which, uh, those, that work will be done, uh, by Custom Electric in June, most likely.
Well, don't forget to send us an invitation to the ribbon cutting. Excellent. Uh, I wrote it down in pen, so now we're really counting on October 1st. I'm just kidding. It's fine. Uh, no pressure. I know, the weather is so dicey, but yes. Do you have any questions for Andy? Any? We, we did a round and, yep, we're good. Thank you. So much, because we just want to keep going forward. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, we don't want to lose a beat or a step. Uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, though. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. We're all very excited about this project, so this is good. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving for the Karst Athletic Complex Contract Number Two, Change Order Number Three, and Contract Number One, Change Order Number Four, and in Contract Number One, Change Order Three, which includes $114,200, $723.47, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to come back on May 8th? Nope. Okay. I don't think so. Right? Oh, we're good.
This is a continuation of a current project. I think it's good.
Okay.
I have your, um, info up here and your note. Thank you. Appreciate you. Right. Uh, thank you so much. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for sharing the information. Um, uh, we have one more item, uh, from planning, Ms. Krsilius. This is ordinance, uh, 2025-13. It is the North Park PUD Outline Plan Amendment Seven.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this is a plan unit development outline amendment request. So this would be amending an existing PUD North Park ordinance. Um, this would be, uh, in kind of an overhaul to the existing North Park area. Um, we are looking at, it is 470 acres total. It is 46 parcels, uh, under separate ownership. So on screen is a map showing the ownership of the properties that are involved in this PUD. This is the absolute majority of the PUD, um, legally. There is, uh, an off, two parcels that are generally referred to as North Park, but they were adopted under separate ordinances at different times. So they're very similar. They're called North Park, but technically they're separate. Um, so this is, North Park was created in 2004, and then it's been amended six times over the years, the most recently in 2023. The petitioner is Logan Land Development LLC and is being represented by, uh, Urban Planning and Architectural Forum, MKSK. All right. So, um, within your packet, there are two exhibits. Exhibit A is the proposed ordinance, um, as accepted by planning, highway, stormwater, and petitioner. Um, and Exhibit B is the staff report, slightly updated for this meeting, um, but generally as approved by the plan commission. So the plan commission heard this and forwarded a positive recommendation. Um, they had a couple of edits to the ordinance, one of which was to remove a section of the ordinance. Um, and that was completed. Uh, edits were accepted by the petitioner and planning. So you do have a, a final version in front of you as exhibit A. Um, so as you know, a PUD dictates land use, landscaping, parking signage, that kind of thing. It is still built in within the proposed ordinance that, um, any development plan for any properties within the site, uh, if adopted, would be reviewed by plan commission. So there would still be public notice, um, and review, overview by plan commission that they're following the North Park ordinance. So, um, the proposed PUD, let me jump to, let's see, page 11 of Exhibit A. So they are proposing five development sub-districts, um, Neighborhood, Regional Services, Government Center, Conservation Development, and then one that is titled Open Space and Parks. This does include the Commissioner-owned, um, quarry property. It also includes PUD designated areas of open space. This might be riparian areas, areas that have been platted as open space under the PUD requirements. So it's kind of a combination district. Um, let's see. So this is a great improvement over the prior ordinance. Um, the prior ordinance had many districts and multiple sub-districts involved. Um, it proposes a new principal permitted use table. And, let's see, I'm going to... So, within that use table, um, it is organized as, um, has a proposed 65 uses. I'm going to see if I can find it here. Um, this is, the uses listed and the categories here are consistent with the county development ordinance, which is going to, um, allow a longer, you know, level of usability in the future. Um, the definitions for these uses are also consistent with the county development ordinance. So, um, places where they did not necessarily want to reinvent the wheel, within the ordinance, they stated, you know, please see the Monroe County Development Ordinance as adopted. So this is going to be a lot easier to be able to implement, um, in the future as development plans are proposed. So there's the normal categories that we have in the CDO, like presidential, public and semi-public uses, personal service uses, retail, automotive, transportation, and so on. Um, within the use table, we have, um, the exact same type of use listing that we have in the CDO, which is permitted with standards, conditional, and then blank is not permitted. Permitted with standards, again, points to the county development ordinance, the same with conditional uses. So one of the changes for development plans, I'm going to try to scroll through here, um, is that prior, we had, stormwater had, um, the North Park PUD had a regional stormwater and detention plan, so that there were certain triggers built in when a development plan was proposed, or it reached a certain, um, percentage of development, then certain stormwater detention, certain, certain infrastructure had to be, uh, constructed and built. Um, unfortunately, it never really clarified who would, you know, bear the cost of that. So it was, it was always, um, difficult to implement when it, when the time came. Right now, we've seen most of this proposed regional services area as being developed. So this area does have some, um, regional stormwater infrastructure. But moving forward, um, we, it is proposed that stormwater is addressed, um, on each site individually. So it would be addressed under each development plan rather than having those built-in triggers. Um, next up, you know, so, let's see. I really should have just used my PowerPoint, because it's a lot better than trying to jump around within this large ordinance. Um, we do still have design criteria for the North Park PUD. It's a little bit, um, more detailed. We've, so staff, specifically the planning director, has met with, you know, the petitioner multiple times, several times in person, and multiple times, um, online as we work through, uh, department comments through the ordinance and kind of , um, general stakeholder comments, which would include the consultants for the new justice facility, DLZ. Um, so something that, you know, a little bit of feedback was looking at, um, units per acre for density and also maximum impervious. We also had some edits to maximum height. Um, so on screen, they didn't add a maximum pervious cover design standard to the PUD, which is great. Um, you will also notice that there is a minimum lot area that is generally not applicable because of most of these zones are either, um, commercial and non-commercial uses. Um, we only really have, like, conservation development has a minimum lot size because that is the only zone that would potentially allow a single-family lots. Um, so that's where you see that really small minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet. Um, so the way that that is designed, the neighborhood, I'm sorry, conservation development center has such a small lot size, um, because it is developed as being, um, eligible for kind of a cluster-type subdivision. So there's a standard that when it gets developed, um, it's required that 50% of the area, here we go, on screen is the map of conservation development, that 50% of that area, um, gets designated as open space to meet a PUD requirement. So that's where you see such a small lot in those areas because within that district, the terrain, um, does vary and does have some challenges. There's creek that runs through the property and varying elevations. So I'm going to go ahead and jump to the infrastructure plan. And I'm going to jump to page 59 of the staff report. So this does include an overhaul to propose the transportation plan and alternative transportation plans. And North Park had, um, a web of, of transportation connections, uh, new road connections and trail connections that were required, again, kind of at certain checkpoints, depending upon when certificate of occupancy was requested, when a land use certificate was requested, or, um, for like the regional services district, when there was a certain percentage of the district was developed. Um, so a lot of this is being simplified. You saw, um, the last amendment to North Park in 2023 did remove multiple connections. Um, so you saw that in 2023. We got rid of, like, one of the roads through the quarry park. Um, that big looping road was removed. So on screen, we did go ahead and create, this is a staff-created map. Um, so it removed those roads from 2023. And then on screen, um, so the roads that are built are shown in blue. Um, the roads that are being proposed and would stay, um, would be potentially built in the future are shown in green, um, with one exception. So on screen, there is a portion of road labeled number eight in green as being proposed. This was removed under, um, the ordinance as of the, post the plan commission meeting. So the property owners of this property, uh, which is IU Health, um, attended the meeting and, and, you know, requested that that road connection be removed. Um, it was discussed at the meeting and plan commission included that as a condition of a positive recommendation that they go ahead and remove that from the ordinance. Staff and the petitioners and highway department were all supportive of this. So that Exhibit A within your, your packet, um, does not include the requirement to build Road Eight. So North Park had a lot of connections, uh, planned at the time. We are seeing really the two main road connections on screen, which is, uh, listed as number three and number 14 as being removed. Um, number 14 is a large swooping road going from North Lintel up to a future connection on the state road. Um, this crosses some really variable terrain, and they, generally, everybody's in agreement and acceptable that that road requirement is removed. Um, it's an understanding that there's likely going to be connections through there, but maybe it won't connect from North Lintel. Um, there, the northern state road, um, road connections to the east and to the west will remain. Um, it just likely because of that creek might not connect to North Lintel. When it comes to alternative transportation, um, the petitioners are proposing that the main alternative transportation, um, the main primary pedestrian crossing is going to be at the intersection of Hunter Valley Road and State Road, uh, 46 through already-built sidewalks. Um, so there is a requirement that, um, there is a multi-use path on the east side of State Road, and also there is an already-built multi, um, use path on the west side. So they're still proposing consistent sidewalk construction as the properties get developed. Um, one of the bigger things that was removed from the ordinance is the prior, the existing ordinance has a requirement for either a overpass or underpass on State Road 46. Um, so on the screen, on the left side is the existing alternative transportation plan, and on the right is the proposed. So on the existing plan, there's three red circles. And within that And within that ordinance, it states that an underpass/overpass should be built at one of those locations. And then again, it had some kind of more vague threshold as to when that got triggered. So it was looked into with the new VA outpatient clinic on North Lintel Drive. It was not triggered at that point with that development plan, and we kind of got into the weeds a little bit of, how would that be implemented? And it wasn't written very clearly. So generally, Planning Staff is supportive of seeing that requirement removed, as, you know, we support the primary pedestrian crossing at Hunter Valley Lintel. So, just going to scroll back up. I believe I have hit the main points of the petition. So, Plan Commission forwarded with a positive recommendation, and Planning Staff recommends approving the PUD Outline Plan Amendment based on the compatibility with the comprehensive plan, and still subject to the Highway Department reports. Is there anything I can research or clarify?
Will my colleagues have questions for Ms. Krsilias? Thank you for the very detailed report.
I think everything's clear for me. Thank you. I have no questions.
Yeah, I have a question. This is one of those rare Plan Commission meetings I missed. I was at Citizens Academy. But I do have a question for you, and I'm just going to send it to you via email, because it's kind of technical. So I will just send it to you via email. When would you all like to hear this? We are, we do have a meeting next week, but it's also the Peace Officer Memorial, and I don't know what time that starts. So I don't know if we want to do, is it 29? Angie's doing a quick lookup. I just realized all of that as I'm sitting here talking about it. Because it might need to be as late as the 29th, Ms. Krsilias. I'm just warning you. Based on our schedule and other activities here, that would make it a very long meeting for Planning Staff. That's the Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. You could, next week if you wanted. I mean, we could do it that soon, too, so. Actually, it starts at 11, is what I'm seeing. But that was previous years.
It will be Thursday, May 15th, at 11. Now, this time, it's going to be at City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, May 15th at 11.
So we might want to start our meeting earlier than, we'll talk about that. But anyway, do you want to do it as soon as next week? Ms. Krsilias, would that be possible, to do it next week? Because otherwise, it might be the 29th.
You know, I'm supposed to be heading to an American Planning Association conference in Columbus.
Okay.
I either could have asked Director Jellin to cover, or we could do it the 29th. Whatever you would like.
Okay. Well, why don't you, why don't you check with the petitioner, talk to Ms. Nestor Jellin, and, you know, see which date you prefer, and just get it on our, just get it on our calendar for either the 8th or the 29th. Okay?
Okay, sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. I'll be in touch on email probably tonight. I'll send it, so you'll get it tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Mr. Cockrell wants to say something.
Well, I just, we've been working on the, the, we've been working on the Septic Repair, and I think we have, I have signed over $400,000 worth of contracts, so we are trending to being about halfway there.
Wow.
Maybe a little over. So I was a little surprised that it was that much, so, because it just doesn't feel like it.
Yeah.
But we are working, so we're probably at least 40, we're over 40% of the way of expending the funds.
Great. I appreciate your work on that. I know each one is different and detailed, and I appreciate that you're on that, on the case, as it were. And I forgot to mention that on Saturday, I think it was, the Van Buren Township had its ribbon cutting, not its ribbon cutting, its open house. I think the ribbon cutting's today. But they had an open house, and that property is amazing. The community building will, has a kitchen. It will hold up to 197 people. There's a lower rate for Van Buren residents, but anyone in the county can call to reserve it, but you have to use the phone and call the Van Buren Township offices to see if it's available. It's a great site. And they are still planning to put community gardens in, which is nice. Yeah. All right. Good? Good? All right. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is May 8th, 10 a.m., right here in the NatU Hill Room. Thank you. We're adjourned.